Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Want to welcome you all to our council meeting for tonight. Also want to welcome our invited guests, everyone who's joining us online. In addition to recognizing our city staff, who is present with us in the audience. Of course, we're going to recognize our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Ms. Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. And my colleagues on council, thank you all for being here tonight. And we will begin with the invocation, and that will be done by Pastor Michael Porter, Sr. of Twine Memorial Holy Temple. Pastor Porter, thank you, sir, for being here.
You're welcome.
May we all stand.
God bless you. Let us pray. But turn to God our Father, we thank you for your loving kindness, we thank you for your grace and mercy in allowing us to assemble on this evening. We pray and ask thy blessing and covering upon council, dear God, and newly elected officials that are present as we launch into this new year. We pray to God and thank you for all of our police officers, fire department, emergency EMT individuals, and all of those, dear God, that are access to our great city. We are who you allow us to be, but we realize in all our ways we ought to acknowledge you and that you ought to direct our paths. We pray thy covering upon council and for direction that you give us the divine guidance, dear God, that we would do those things that are beneficial for our great city. Bless council and citizens as they come together and co-labor together. We know, dear God, our steps are ordered by you, and we know righteously we should do those things that will bring glory and honor to you. We ask thy covering and thy blessing. And, God, we just thank you for allowing us this privilege to be here tonight. Thank you, we honor you, we shall ever give you the praise and honor and glory that you so well deserve, in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. And thank you again, Pastor Porter.
You're welcome.
Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now ask my colleagues to please note your attendance electronically.
Six members of City Council present.
We have-
Excuse me, seven. I'm sorry, seven. Seven. It's okay, before they get me.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
We have the minutes of a call meeting, January 28, 2025, and a regular meeting, January 28, 25. Do we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes?
Move adoption, second.
Please, please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body, rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We have now come to the agenda item, Public Hearings, item 25-48 HSND 24-01. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
A resolution ran in the request of S. Lowry, on behalf of New Testament Church Ministries, for an honorary street name designation to designate a portion of Rapidan Street between Greenwood Drive and Hancock Avenue as Jerome L. Williams Way in recognition of Jerome L. Williams, the current pastor of New Testament Church Ministries in Portsmouth. The property is public right-of-way owned by the city of Portsmouth. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for transportation. Planning Commission recommends approval, and the actual resolution reads, "A resolution designating an honorary street name of Jerome L. Williams Way for the portion of Rapidan Street located between Greenwood Drive and Hancock Avenue."
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have the applicant here to present? If they will come forward and state their name and address, they will have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Samuel Lowry. This is my wife, Valerie Lowry, and deacon Derek Blair. We are all members of New Testament Church, and we're glad to have us here for this opportunity to make our presentation. Go to the next slide. I just want to give you an overview of Rapidan Street and our request. The slide on the left is the aerial view of Rapidan Street. As you see on the right of Building 403, that is actually New Testament Church. And our request is going from Greenwood Drive and one block up to Hancock Avenue. These are both just street views of Rapidan Street. The one on the right shows a picture of the church from Airline Boulevard, I mean, not Airline, Victory Boulevard, up to down Rapidan Street, and it continues on down to Cavalier And just another aerial view, I mean, a street view of the street. And on the right is a sample of how the honorary street sign would look. That's just a sample of what was done in Newport News for Allen Iverson Way, and of course, this would be Jerome L. Williams Way. And the stop sign on the left, and there's another stop sign on Hancock, where there'll be both signs on both streets. Okay, Bishop L. Williams became the pastor of New Testament Church in 2001, and he has been a significant leader of the church and our local community. He started by inheriting a 75-member small church and converting it to a thriving 2,900 members and a major redevelopment that expanded the facility from a seating capacity of 115 to over 550. Bishop Williams immediately started the J.L. Williams Enrichment Center, which provided early childhood development for many local children in the Cavalier Manor area. Bishop Williams does not just serve the community, but he serves in an impactful and influential way. He was recently named the president of the Martin Luther King Steering Committee and serves on the Board of Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce. He is also a leader in the local NAACP and co-sponsored the Better Now Portsmouth Community Walk Against Violence, sponsored by Pastor Melvin O. Mariner. Over 200 families are impacted annually through Bishop Williams' efforts with backpacks, stuff for school supplies for back-to-school. They're blessed through the church's toy drives, food pantry, utility assistance for local members or local people in the community, college scholarship funds, and tuition assistance funds. For his outstanding contributions to the community, Bishop Williams was named Pastor of the Year by the former mayor, Kenny Wright, of Portsmouth, who designated every July 27 as Bishop Day. He was named an honorary marshal in the 2006 Parade and Festival for Outstanding Community Service Award. Bishop Williams personifies what Portsmouth wants its young people to strive for. He was born and raised right here in the very neighborhood of where the church resides and where his impact is felt the most. He carries the mantle of the bishop prick with dignity and with honor. So, of course, I highly recommend this request for Bishop Jerome L. Williams, which would be Jerome L. Williams Way, be approved by the City Council. A vote yes will show that Portsmouth is a progressive and forward-thinking city who honors its residents and their substantial contributions to the growth of the city of Portsmouth. And that's all I have, sir, and I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for my colleagues on council for the applicant? Seeing none, sir, ma'am, sir, you can be seated.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come forward and speak on this particular public hearing item, you can do so. You are required to state your name and address, and you will be given five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor.
Evening, sir.
Honorable council members, city staff, good evening to everyone. Being a man of few words, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read my presentation. October 14, 2024, City of Portsmouth Planning Commission and City Council, this letter is to confirm that the United Civic League of Cavalier Manor voted by a majority present at our October 14, 2024 meeting to give our support for the honorary naming of Rapidan Street in recognition of Bishop Jerome Williams. Bishop Williams has been pastoring New Testament since 2000. New Testament has been a pillar in the Cavalier Manor community and always ready to step up and in and partner with numerous activities in the community and the city since becoming their shepherd. We congratulate him on his many, many accomplishments, as well as his many leadership roles in many local and regional organizations. Without even knowing the position we had taken, he most graciously opened up his doors recently for our Civic League to meet during the closure of the rec center, which could probably last to who knows when. But while we held our meetings stating his doors were open for our use as long as necessary, it is our honor to present this confirmation letter on his and New Testament Church's behalf, signed by Ray Smith, Senior President of United Civic League of Cavalier Manor. And I just might add that I've known Bishop Williams personally over the years, and he is a super guy, and I think it would be a great honor to see his name up on the street and block that the church was in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other individuals in the audience wish to come speak on this public hearing item? If you would like to do so, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. Council members, we're in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, I intend to vote to approve, but before I do, I want to remind my colleagues of the discussion at the Planning Commission. When this item was addressed at Planning Commission, there were questions, a couple of questions, important questions, frankly, asked, in my opinion, about, you know, satisfying the criteria that we put in place for honorary street designation naming. And so, I just want to remind everybody what those criteria are. Yeah, come on. I'll remind everybody what the criteria are. An individual or group of historical or cultural significance, an individual or group that's made a significant positive impact on the city, state, or country. The impact must be well documented and broadly acknowledged within the community and by the city of Portsmouth. And then further on, the designations should not be denoting political or religious connotation. So, I bring those things forward because there was discussion at Planning Commission at first around the potential religious connotation, but the application was amended so that the sign doesn't have a religious connotation. And importantly, the other discussion was around, you know, we have a lot of churches in town. If every church decides that they want to honor their pastor, we're going to have honorary street names all over the city. And so, it's important to remind ourselves, as our criteria spells out, the reason that we're honoring Bishop Williams is because of his impact to the community and the fact that that is well documented, not only in the submission, but in the conversations that I've been privy to at the Civic League meeting and other places. So, I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of all these criteria so that we don't open a floodgate for honorary street namings, because one of the other criteria that we put in motion is the honorary designation of a street is a high honor and should not be done casually. In this case, I don't feel like it's being done casually, and I appreciate the nomination and the work that went into the nomination documenting the impact of the community that Bishop Williams has made, and based on that, I intend to support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Attorney, you have the floor.
I just want to, just for clarity's sake, there is no restriction against religious entities applying. They just have to fulfill the elements of the application, which are the impact and all the other things that were noted. We are not in any way discriminating against religious entities or any other entities. Everyone is eligible to apply. They must just fit the provision, so I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Are there any other discussion for my colleagues on council? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now moving to our city manager's report, item on the agenda. Item 25-49. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting problem gambling prevention funding in the amount of $25,280 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by BHS to provide services designed to address problem gambling.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Item 25-50. And, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting with appreciation the donation of one diminut K-9 training apprehension suit valued at approximately $1,500 by a group known as Local Authors for PPD K-9.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now moved to item new business under the agenda, item 25-51, Boards and Commissions. Vice Mayor Moody, do we have any boards or commissions to report tonight?
Mayor, I'll defer to Councilman Hugel.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We have no border commission appointments to make tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilman Hugel, for bringing that up. Just so you know why we're laughing, I believe Councilman Hugel I was supposed to call on. And so, I affectionately called on the Vice Mayor because he and I were a part of the Personnel Committee at one point in our history. So, thank you all. Item 25-52, items submitted by council. Are there any items to be submitted by council at this time? Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I wanted to just circle back to something. One of our public speakers came a few, I think, last meeting to talk about, and I think I see it up here as well, but the coldest night of the year, walk is coming up, February 22nd, and so that brought to my mind about our issue and discussion of homelessness. And for the city manager, the request was, what are we doing about the homeless population, especially to communicate, I guess, create some synergy between what's available to those populations outside of Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, and coordinating that especially during bad weather. Can we get a, can I get a follow-up maybe by next meeting on if we can establish some sort of homeless task force? Before you said, there's no designated person really in the city to monitor that. Councilman Hugel did let me know that there's a, I think, I forgot the name of it, Councilman Hugel, the board that you said meets sometimes? Yes, thank you. But I just think we, I would like to seek kind of some more coordination there to really address our homeless population, and with the coldest night of the year coming up, I think this is a great time to really have that at the forefront, if I can get some follow-up on that.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Give me a little more definition on what it is that you're looking for, so I know how to come back to it.
Okay, so, yeah, so, one, we, the person that came to speak, one of our citizens came to speak before about how they were trying to coordinate some help and resources with some of our homeless population, and there was some gaps or disconnects between, you know, resourcing and providing those resources, depending on who you called. And so, I believe that there are some ways that we can improve that. You told me before that really we work with Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, but there's no point personnel designated outside of our emergency response person, I think, for homelessness.
Right.
And if we're going to really address homelessness in our city, I think we should have some more direction, a person to really guide and monitor that. And then the board that, I don't want to say board, but the board that Councilman Hugel talked about how they meet, having some more insight into the directions or the planning that we can then impact from a city standpoint to make sure that we really have a plan to address homelessness, we really have designated guidance and resources for our church, our, you know, church communities, that we have a bunch of disjointed, I'm trying to say this in a nice way, we have a bunch of disjointed efforts that all have good, positive impacts, but I think we could do some things to really synergize that, to really address our homeless population. So, I wanted to get some follow-up there, maybe a task force or something there.
If I can, I think that P-HAC group that Councilman Hugel is discussing, or referenced, is already working on a comprehensive plan to kind of do all those things that you're talking about. So, let me kind of make sure I don't step on their toes.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, as we do this, but I'd definitely give you feedback on where that is.
Absolutely. And if they already have something, that would be great. I just need to, you know, maybe have some insight into it. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
And also, if I could just add a little bit to that, there was a follow-up, I believe, in one of your report backs on some of the things that we were doing in Portsmouth. So, I would refer all of my colleagues to that as well, but certainly looking forward to the additional information that you can bring back from P-HAC, okay? Thank you, sir, and thank you, ma'am. Are there any other items to be submitted by council? Well, I have one. So, as we all know, the month of February is Black History Month, which was started by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, which was initially Negro History Week, and it evolved into Black History Month. Carter G. Woodson, Harvard-educated and a Virginian. So, I'm going to share with you a Black History moment dealing with the African-Americans in the military. Military history of African-Americans spans from the arrival of the first black slaves from the colonial times to the present day. There has been no war fought for, by, or within the United States in which African-Americans did not participate, including the Revolutionary War, the War of 1812, the Mexican-American War, World War I and II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, the Gulf War, and the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, as well as other minor conflicts. The military service has offered African-Americans a means of economic, social, and political, as well as military advancement. In Portsmouth, during the early months of the Civil War, the Confederacy engaged African-Americans, most of whom were enslaved as civilians in naval shipyards, ordinance yards, depots to haul supplies on waterways, to work in naval stores to fire boilers, and to make naval materials. In Portsmouth, between 1863 and 1865, hundreds of African-Americans ranging in age from 18 to 45 enlisted in the Union Army and served faithfully in the 10th U.S. Colored Volunteers, the 1st and 2nd Colored Cavalry, the 2nd Light Artillery, and the 36th and 38th Regiment colored infanteries. Unlike the Army that did not utilize black soldiers until 1863, the Navy enlisted blacks as sailors as early as September 1861. Six African-Americans received the Navy Medal of Honor; many others received lesser decorations. Black soldiers and sailors made significant contributions and served honorably during World War I and World War II while battling racism and discrimination. By the end of World War I, over 3,000, well, 350,000 African-Americans had served. In World War II, 125,000 African-Americans served overseas. Legal segregation remained in place until the Korean War, and it was not until the Vietnam War that the armed services were fully integrated. The participation of African-Americans in the U.S. military has a long and distinguished history. Since the 1970s, the U.S. military has made a serious effort at racial integration, and while much remains to be done, the military has achieved a degree of success in that area that surpasses most civilian institutions. Thought I'd share that with you, and thank you for listening. Are there any other items to be submitted by council? Seeing none, then we will move on to item 25-53, Report on Pending Items. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Any information that's been distributed to you, you should have the report back already concerning those items that was brought up at the last council meeting. I've recorded what Ms. Thomas has asked for, and we'll make sure that we provide that at the next meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is item 25-54, Non-Agenda Speakers. Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body, rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker for the evening, Mr. G.W. Thompson. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and city manager. My name is G.W. Thompson. I reside at 4065 Wendy Browell Drive here in Portsmouth. I'm here on behalf of- I'm here on behalf of Virginia Organizing and Non-Partisan Political Action Group. Also present tonight are volunteers from the Breakfast Feeding Program sponsored by Zion Baptist and Ebenezer Baptist Church. With those who are here to advocate for shelter for the homeless during inclement weather, please stand. Okay, thank you. At the last city council meeting, we were encouraged that you were going to take this issue up as an agenda item to be addressed by our city manager. As I stated at our last meeting, there was a plan to provide temporary housing for this population during the COVID epidemic. I was told that the plan was still in existence, but after contacting the non-emergency number and the police department, it was discovered that there was no longer a plan in place to address this issue. It appears there are some miscommunication between city agencies. I want to acknowledge your more support of the shelter by providing a facility for Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless for this population. During extreme weather, the homeless are vulnerable to life-threatening conditions such as hypothermia, frostbite, and in the summer, heat-related health conditions. I was informed that in the past, the city would provide a temporary shelter to house this population staff by city employees, which addressed liability issues. Thank you, councilperson Thomas, for following up on this agenda item. Since the last meeting, I am pleased that I received a letter from Councilman Tillich encouraging us to continue to pursue this matter. Virginia Organizing had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Darlene Washington, Director of Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, last night, and she updated us regarding the capacity of the current shelter, which is 20. The requirements for being admitted, such as having a documented medical condition, disability, valid ID, and other requirements. She informed us that the shelter is not at capacity. Our concern is what happens when it's at capacity and there is a weather emergency. One of our members mentioned that on one cold night, a lady was in her hallway needing shelter. She contacted, contacted the police and was told that she would have to be charged with trespassing before she could be sheltered in the jail. That may not be true, but it speaks to the need to clarify the lines of communication. Dr. Washington informed us that the construction of the permanent shelter with a capacity of 50 will begin this year. Thank you, city council. We encourage everyone to support the coldest night of the year, 5K Walk on February 22nd, being sponsored by the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless to raise funds for this shelter. Any additional support that the city council can provide would be greatly appreciated. We also met with Lieutenant Sherrod, interim manager of the Emergency Management Program, who has been researching this issue and seeking to come up with solutions. The city is fortunate to have these individuals who are passionate about this issue. These are the issues we would like to be addressed. Clarification of requirements, notifying all agencies of who is eligible and the process of being admitted, publicizing this information through media, churches, and other agencies who come in contact with these individuals, need for updated transportation to the shelter, informing this population for the criteria for being admitted. There are rules and regulations like anything else. A hotline number that people could call, provide a temporary shelter staff by city workers, which addresses liability issues. Dr. Washington mentioned that only a few clients showed up the last time the shelter was in effect, maybe because of a lack of knowledge about the program or whatever. We still think it's worth exploring as a solution. Kudos to Dr. Washington, who takes a holistic approach to this population to empowering these individuals for a better life. We thank Lieutenant Sherrod and Dr. Washington for taking the time to meet with us. City council, we urge you to support, to, your support to address this issue, ensuring that more individuals have access to safe, safe shelter during severe weather like tonight by increasing funding to support the shelter program and improving coordination among agencies. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, thank you, and thank you for your organization and what you do for our homeless.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde Yotrowski. Mr. Yotrowski, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and other neighbors. I passed up the opportunity back in January to cover this particular topic, but I do have a long memory occasionally. And so I'm returning to it. It's called Title Unhappy. And what makes me unhappy is to see extraneous titles on the name plaques of my elected members of council. The only titles that are really appropriate are the ones that go with your reason for sitting where you do and serving as you do. So mayor, councilmember, vice mayor, those are all suitable for the job that you're holding down. But doctor, admiral, MBA, these aren't related to your service to the community. These were not qualifiers for your holding the position that you do. Now, I want, want you all to be clear that I am speaking specifically to the seven elected members of the city council. This does not apply to staff. So the other piece that, that I find annoying is councilman and councilwoman. Councilmember would serve for every member of council. It's not really a gendered role. You serve as our representatives, the people who are the sovereign under the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. So I would like to see you modify your rules, discard the signs you have except for those in front of the mayor and the vice mayor because they fit, and replace the others with your names and councilmember to designate what your role is and why it is that you are sitting in your seats. Since I have a little time left on the clock, there was another item. I had forgotten why I had put that down, but it occurred to me. As I have said to predecessor councils, the one, one of the few, rather, bright spots during the pandemic was the fact that the public had an opportunity to participate in these proceedings remotely. I'd like to see that brought back. As we are in the budget season now, if there is some sort of financial obstacle to making that happen, then I would like to see funds put in the budget to ensure that it does. There are many people who have come before you at this diocese who no longer appear here. Some of them can't. Some of them have impediments like not driving at night because their vision is not adequate for that purpose. But you found a way to make it possible for the public to address you during the pandemic by electronic means. And I see no reason why, with the technology of five years ago, you could do it. And now, when technology has progressed, why you cannot do it other than the absence of a willingness to do so. So I'm putting in, I'm, I'm planting another stake in the ground. I want to see that become a part of this year's budget if it needs to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Daniel House. Mr. House, if you would come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Dan House. I live in the city of Portsmouth. I grew up here, was born and raised in the old Portsmouth General Hospital. I originally started addressing city council about a year and a half ago when I saw the same city inspectors or the people that tagged the trash and, and two days later, it got picked up because you put it out two days early. So I started contacting the city via emails and addressing issues and address city council. And then the, one of the inspectors says, hey, why don't you, you know, use this portal See Click Fix app? And, you know, we'll get to it better and quicker, and that doesn't happen, okay? What happens is, is I reported a complaint. I researched the city code and put the city code in there. I even take pictures, okay? And I give a description of how it's violating the city code. Well, what happens is, city code changed from 40 dot 1 to 40 dot 2. So what happens, the city inspector says, oh, this happened during dot 1. So we went to dot 2, and all dot 2 did was changes where it listed in the city code. It didn't change any of the verbiage whatsoever. But they're like, since we're in dot 2, guess what? It's grandfathered in. We don't have to do anything with it. It can stay a violation because it occurred a violation back then, and the city didn't check it, didn't count. So it's going to continue. So then they close it out. So then I'm like, okay, so I'll report another one. I reported four different issues that had graffiti on them. Three of them are on city electrical boxes, one's at the corner of where they're going to change the name, okay? I just got a response back on Friday for graffiti on a dumpster. Okay, what was my response back? That it was closed was that the pictrometry, which is the satellite image, said that it was, that the dumpster was there prior to 2013, so it was closed. Didn't even address the graffiti that I listed as the issue. They're like, it, it's been there, so it can stay there. There's no oversight, okay? No oversight. I have, I haven't had the pleasure of talking to one of you individuals up there, but I won't say the name because we're not supposed to do that. That person reached out to me when they first came in office. Ten months later, I still haven't had a meeting to go over the issues that I, that I was diligently addressing to city council, okay? Nobody, so I feel like nobody really cares, and it's just a portal that nobody looks at. So what happens is, is when I list something, they'll acknowledge it. It'll go for months with no action, no action at all. And the only way I can find out any action is do a FOI request. Say, can you tell me what the status is on this? And a lot of times, it's like, well, nothing's been done. So I've expended the energy to generate the complaint, had to go and say, hey, because y'all've got nobody, there's no way to check up on any of these, other than the FOI request, okay? Because when you talk to the inspectors, they're like, huh, you know? So it, it, it's, it's a shame that you've got such a good system out there, but there's so many anomalies that make it a broken system. And somebody needs to do something and do an audit on the program or have a way that the public can rate it, okay? Not just the little click button at the bottom that says, thank you, or reply, okay? We need to have a way to, to say, did this meet our needs? And, and actually correct the issue that we addressed. There's nothing out there. Thank you, and you have a nice night.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dodson, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Yes, I've received a number of complaints similar, similar to this. And it is frustrating to have a system that the citizens who volunteer their time and their energy to submit these requests not be satisfied or not, not be listened to or responded to. I'd love it if we could have further discussion on the effectiveness of this system, of this system in, in the future and how we're intending to use it.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
All right, anytime you want to have a discussion about how that system works, I can definitely have that discussion with you. One of the things I want to make sure that we.
Could you speak into the microphone a little more, sir?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, better.
All right. We're gonna have a discussion about it anytime you want. One thing I do want to make sure that we realize that when a complaint is issued or a, a service request is, is provided, when those inspectors go out and look at that, they're given their professional opinion of how that either is a violation or is not a violation, and it's, and that's recorded. Because the person submitting their request doesn't agree, doesn't mean it wasn't addressed. But to answer your questions, absolutely. We can have a discussion about it at any point you want to.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Carter, maybe you can spend a little more time talking about how you're working to put accountability into See Click Fix through your Update Monday program.
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. One of the requirements, well, first of all, culture change is, is a slow process. It's not going to happen overnight. There's things that has transpired for decades that won't turn around on a dime. However, we're trying to implement some things to bring some accountability and some transparency to the process. One of those things that Councilman Hugo has alluded to is what we're calling Update Mondays. On the first and third of every Monday, it is required that everyone in the city, not just for the See Click Fix, but period, kind of go through those things that we have someone waiting on a response from us and ensure that we get responses out to those that are waiting for responses. So that is one of the things that we're trying to enact to get some things turned around and moved in the right direction. Thank you for the opportunity.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, while we're on the topic of See Click Fix, I did want to bring up the issue of knowledge of the app as well. And I, I heard you say, city manager, that, you know, it's a culture change. I spoke recently at one of our Civic League meetings, and the inspector was there, and they were taking notes from some of the citizens about some of the issues they were seeing in their neighborhood. But the Civic League president officers, they did not know about See Click Fix. And you provided some information for me to share directly with that Civic League to their members. So I would like us to also, while we're looking at the, just accountability factor, to look at the messaging and getting that out to our population more as well. And then I have one question, I guess it kind of ties into accountability. But with the request, is there a tiered system that is assessed with each item that's, you know, submitted? Like if a, let's say a main water break, and a citizen takes a picture of that, is that assessed at a higher level, like an emergency level versus something else?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Absolutely, ma'am. We triage those things, kind of like when you go to the emergency room. If you show up at the emergency room and you, you have a runny nose, but somebody shows up with a heart attack, you're going to sit for a while, and a heart attack victim is going to get taken care of. And then if somebody else shows up with a broken leg, you're probably going to sit some more, and the broken leg's going to be taken care of. So we do triage those items and then try to prioritize those so that we're actually taking care of those things that's going to affect more people. Or if there's a, like, say, an emergency situation that we have to take care of. One thing that we do ask, if, if there is an emergency situation, please don't use See Click, See Click Fix.
Two, three, one, one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That way, you're actually talking to somebody, you know what I mean?
And the citizens, they do, I, I guess, they, when they use that app, if they submit something, they, is that correct, that they don't have insight into what is, when it's closed, or they do?
They do. They will, whoever submitted, if you submit it, if you submit it anonymously, no, you won't get anything back. But if you put something in about how to contact you.
You get follow-up.
Yes. Anything that's documented will be sent back to you, even when it's closed and how it was closed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Sherman Tyler. Mr. Tyler, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Sherman Tyler, I reside in Portsmouth, Virginia. I'd like to say hi to the mayor, city councilor, everybody. I would, first of all, I'd like to say, I haven't been able to make it to the few city council meetings. I wanted to thank all my neighbors on, on my street who actually, we got together and was able to rent five vans and we got a hundred and sixty-eight people out on election day to the polls and, I'd like to thank all them guys for their money, their time, who did this out of our pocket, no help from nobody else. So I want to thank those guys for that. All my neighbors, Jesse, I'm gonna miss somebody, so I'm not gonna call names, but all my neighbors on Parker Avenue who helped us get these people to the polls. It was a nice day, that day and, and I want to thank. Second of all, I would respectfully like to resign from the crime prevention board as of tonight. I just believe that my calling that God has for me has pushed me in a different direction. But I really would, if y'all would, I have a friend in the back, Daryl Redman. He's a, you know, organizer, you know, a good fellow and I just believe that he will serve, serve better on that board. I'm more, I'm more hands-on hands, you know, I see there's a crisis, you know? Y'all gotta realize one thing, and I saw it on the election, the next day I lost hope. I'm like, you mean all my gone, all my money, only fifty percent of the people actually voted? So you got fifty percent of the people that you got to build their trust back. You got fifty percent of the people who didn't even bother to vote, that you got to go out in the heads in the highway and get their confidence back. But, and let me tell you how, myself, I'm a homeowner. I live, I live in Prentice Park. Why did I have to pay twenty-five-hundred dollars on my house? But I can't walk to my corner store because the lighting is so bad. And we're talking about putting twenty-one million dollars on High Street to bring people to our city, but in our own community where we pay our real estate taxes, we can't walk down the street. If you think I'm lying, ride down Randolph right now, Lincoln, Atlantic Avenue, Camden. And the homeowners are scared to walk to their corner store. Y'all got to get that fifty percent of the people who lost confidence in local government. People, at, at the beginning, I had three hundred and some people who had called me to be, to be picked up. By election day, it went down to a hundred and sixty-eight. The people have lost faith in y'all. Because the last four years, we went through pure hell, losing our babies, losing our nieces, losing our families, and you did nothing. Go in the communities, like I just named them streets, put streetlights. If I walked from my house to the corner store, I'm carrying my gun. It's so dark around there on Atlantic Avenue by that church. You can't even walk, it's too dark. Fix that stuff. You got to. Bring the people confidence back in local government because it's gone. When you got fifty percent of the people didn't even get out of bed to pass a vote, it's a problem. And it got to be addressed by y'all. And I want to get off that board because I'm just tired of just talking. People are sitting out there on that same church on Atlantic Avenue freezing right now. If that man right there has a problem, won't somebody get off that board tonight and get for that man and fix the problem tonight? Let's fix it. Get to the people. We voted for y'all. Get with this man tonight and fix this man's problem. Don't make him do nothing else. We're tired of excuses. And it take one person to fix this man whole world. Do it. And when those fifty percent, forget about the ones who put you in office, how about the ones who didn't even vote? You need to get them too. Because we need them too. We need them. They're gonna be our eyes and ears. They be seeing crime, they be seeing stuff too. And you think that they're gonna tell something when they didn't even bother to vote because they lost faith in our local government? Get that back. Give back to them little communities, man, that we need y'all. We need lighting, we need protection. We need that. We homeowners and we scared, we're walking like our own community, paying all their taxes, the highs in Virginia, and can't walk to the corner store at night. And y'all homeless, y'all knew people, I voted for you because I believe you brought a good work. Get in this community and y'all help bring dignity back to Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. Sergio O'Neil.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Sergio O'Neil, I reside at fourteen-twenty Elm Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth, right in Prentice Park. Quite naturally, my neighbor, I recognize my neighbor, I'm glad he spoke up for our community because a lot of people overlook Prentice Park, it's looked at as one of the dark shadows of Portsmouth, but I can tell you that that will change sooner than later. Whether, whether, it won't take an action of council, it's going to take an action of the neighbors out there because we're just not going to put up with it anymore. We're not going to be tolerating a whole bunch of spinning in circles and just waiting until somebody does something. We are doing something. Let's let it be known, we're not going to be the Black Sheba Portsmouth anymore. That's just not how we're, we're not taking it anymore. I did come up here on a positive light. First of all, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Mark Palmerchuk, our Director of Parks and Recreation, for his, I mean, over the top, over the top, his drive for making sure his community partners, specifically New Generation, had a good working relationship with the staff at Neighborhood Facility Recreation Center to allow them to store their equipment there, to continue the practice there, to make sure that, that, that program continues to run. New Generation has been around for thirty-three years now in this city, providing services to the youth. At a lot of times where the, where the founders, the staff foot the bill themselves, so that even the parents of the children that participate in the program, when they don't have the money, a lot of the times the staff of that program provide those services free of charge or they come out their pocket their own self. So that, you know, I would like to thank, again, thank you, Mr. Carter, thank you too. I know I said attorney had some hand in that, you know, that's, that's, that's what it's all about. You know, at the end of the day, we, you know, we all utilize those facilities, we put a lot of effort into making sure our recreation programs and our centers are utilized to the best of their ability. So having a, a facility for youth program that keeps our kids off the streets, that keeps them out of detention homes, that keeps them out of the grave, that's the most important thing. Because one wrong turn, one wrong turn can be a disaster, can be traumatic for any family member of a child that's left to their own devices that doesn't have guidance or direction on what to go to. Moving on for that, I, I, again, I, you know, I came up here on a positive light and I will also like to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, to our sheriff's department. I know Sheriff Moore, we've had plenty of conversation as to what his department is doing, especially again, somebody spoke earlier regarding the homeless population. He's offered his facilities, whatever spaces he's had, to do what need to be done in this city without a whole bunch of political rhetoric and spending and, you know, grandstanding and all that. He just, let's put to action. If there's anybody in this city, anybody that knows what that action look like, Sheriff Moore is one of them, he's always willing, and the program that we, you know, come to him with, anything that the city has needed, you know, anything that, you know, he could do, he's always been willing to do that. So we just, you know, you just got to give people credit where credit is due, you know? And again, it's all about, but I will also encourage my neighbors in saying that, is when we come with an issue, we have to make sure that we're doing our part to address the issue as well. You know, we just can't say, hey, we constantly have an issue, but we as citizens aren't doing nothing but just complaining. Because there are plenty of opportunities for boards, commissions, start your own organization if there's all of that. Because we can't keep saying to our elected, we're, that y'all are not doing nothing, we are sitting at home doing absolutely nothing but complaining on Facebook. I'm quite sure all of you all are members of certain Portsmouth groups, you know, they come about there in many shape, fashion, or form. You see a lot of people coming with complaints. This room should be packed right now. Yet still, it's the same people that's been here for as long as I've been coming to council, probably over the last ten years. So that goes to say a lot. You know, we have to get more voices, more people involved because we, you know, it's ninety-something thousand people in Portsmouth, right? It's going to take ninety-something thousand people to make the change in Portsmouth for Portsmouth to go to the next level, right? You know, we, we, we have communities that are growing around us, it's now, it's 2025. We can't keep using the same excuses, the same old issues, the same old, same old that we've been doing for the last thirty, forty years. I'm thirty-seven, so, you know, that goes to show you. It's time to do something different because other cities are, are moving it along. It's Portsmouth's time to shine, so I would like to ask my neighbors as well as our elected, so let's make sure that we are, when we talk about, we are putting an action behind it and continuously doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Tony Goodwin. Sir, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, council, city mayor, council members and also city staff. My name is Tony Goodwin and I reside in the Parkview section of the city and also have a business here on High Street in two locations. But I do want to talk about some of the incidences that just happened this past weekend. But before I do that, I want to remind you that I again come up to this podium speaking from the heart, but more so coming up here not just to moan and groan about things that go on in the city that are not, that are not worthy for, for us to live by, but at the same time, I come up here with solutions. So back in the October of last year, when we had a rash of shootings in downtown that, that injured people as well as scared a lot of people, residents and businesses alike, I came up with six points and, and of course turned those over to the city. And we haven't had a chance to discuss that since October. But the sad part about it is some of these, some of these same situations still arise, just like I said, over this past weekend. We've had a couple of incidences. One in particular was in front of the children's museum, turned out to be at three forty-five in the morning. There's not too many businesses downtown that are open at three forty-five in the morning. But our, you know, coffee shop and general store and ice cream shop and sub shops and stuff, don't draw that type of lawlessness to our downtown. So it's time to do something about it because if not, those stores will be gone. They're being quartered to go to other cities where it's safer, where they can actually thrive. Residents are leaving due to the fact that the situation is like it is. Children are telling their elderly parents, don't go downtown after five o'clock and go to the restaurants that they have been going to for years. So if you, if we don't get a hold of this, it's going to get worse and/or we're just going to have all the vacant storefronts back again like we had ten years ago, which I've, I have been one of those people that have been trying to fill every one of those storefronts from the one hundred block to the eight hundred block and now and beyond, of course, with the Innovation District coming online. Main Street's a great program. You know, I proposed that, I proposed Main Street back in 2010 and again in 2015, changed the rules in Richmond to get Main Street for Portsmouth in 2015, but we were told no, not to do that now. Now we're finally doing it, but it's going to take other components such as safety and security in downtown. Another incident that happened over on Effingham and Bart Street, which I was actually a witness to, is because of the lighting issues over there along Effingham and Bart Street, the number of lights that are out, obviously I didn't, I don't know if it was because of, it was intentional or truly an accident, but one of our elderly must, in, in one of those scooters, ended up getting mowed down at seven o'clock in the evening. And that was a horrible scene to see because of the fact that whoever it was in the chair, in the, in the, in the mobile or scooter, had been just scooped up and taken off by the ambulance. But you couldn't see down there. There was no lighting to speak of. And the sad part about it is, what's owned by VDOT is obviously, we are paying for that light, no matter if it's burning or if it's out. And every citizen, talking to the citizens, but everyone should be basically calling in either three one one, see, click, fix, dom.com, or calling directly to Dominion and having those fixed. They have to fix them because we are paying for them as taxpayers, every single one of them. And there are lights all over the city that have been out for decades. Perfect case in point, when I put in my See, Click, Fix about a month ago about the lighting on the underpasses of two sixty-four as well as the MLK and as well as the London Boulevard Overpass, there are thirty-eight lights on those underpasses. Four are burning. That's VDOT or ERC. And ERC is a contractor and ERC is breach of contract if they're not taking care of that equipment or keeping their areas clear. So these are things that we can get fixed now. If there were lights down Effingham and Bart, that person on that scooter probably would have made it across that intersection, but he didn't at night. So I want to say to you, safety and security is a big foremost. We have ways to fix these things and we just need to act on them. Those six points back in October, I just wish we could work on them, especially when it comes to nuisances and lawlessness that's being drawn into our downtown that's affecting our businesses also during the day. Because they get the news story, they make a determination, everything is dangerous. And our businesses, from a fabric store to an antique store to a sub shop, to a general store, to a gift shop, to a coffee shop, are going to be gone before we know it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This really is for city, city manager Carter. So just addressing Mr. Tyler, Mr. Neil, and really Mr. Goodwin regarding our lighting situation. For the last meeting, January twenty-eighth, I believe, we adopted a resolution supporting Vision Zero policy to basically allow the city to apply for federal grants for Safe Streets for All. Is lighting included in that, like a lighting assessment of our neighborhoods? Because yes, we have definitely some blind spots and I don't know if the Vision Zero policy includes that look, but is that something we were addressing as part of that resolution we adopted at the last meeting? And if not, can we, can we do that?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. That's the, the Safe Streets for All is not just about the street itself, it's about everything that goes into making that street safe. So lighting, marking, signaling, improvements, all those things are included as a, as things that you can ask for. Now, I don't know if there has been a, a lighting study in the city. I have to get with Dominion and see, you know, where we are with that, but it appears that lighting is an issue around our city that we need to kind of take a hold of and get addressed. What I will do and make a promise to this group, and I don't make a bunch of promises, so, is that we're doing an assessment of the lights that we have, the lights that's operational, the lights that's not operational, and we'll start working with Dominion to get those issues resolved.
Okay. And to add to that, thank you so much, Mr. Carter. To add to that, I think if, when we're, when you're doing that and kind of the assessment with Dominion and so forth, if we could also maybe use some quantitative data behind that where we're prioritizing those high-risk, high-crime areas to really look at where the lighting is lacking, maybe that will give us some bigger wins and tie into some of the work that the Crime Task Force is doing as well. I think it all ties together.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. One of the issues Mr. Goodwin just addressed was some of the problem businesses we have in town. I know that you're taking some efforts to work on those, but I'd like to say, I think that we need to express to the public soon about whether we're going to address the major issue, which is our zoning issue on that. And I'd like to see if we have some initiatives already started to address those zoning issues so that we could tell the public, we are attacking crime.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
As it stands right now, there, there is nothing that's in the pipeline to change the zoning. That's something that we're going to have to work and I have to have a conversation with our city attorney, our, our director of planning. So we kind of figure out what that thing is because you can't do targeted zoning. You have, because you're going to get some really unintended consequences when, when we do things like that. So we, we, we got to really work through what the process is and what, and yes, there is, I want to say this, problems that, that exist in the downtown area. We got to be careful how we attack that also so that we don't put ourselves in a situation that really exacerbates the problem and not solves the problem. We don't want to do, we, again, we can't do targeted things, right? I, I understand that we, we want some changes to happen, but we got to do it in a systematic, really thoughtful way so that at the end, we get the result that we intended and not just rush in and then kind of mess things up really bad and we're, and we're worse off than we started. I think there's some models even around us as people- I think there's some models even around us, as people have talked to me about what Norfolk has done and some other places have done, as a way for us to kind of, uh, they, they've, they've set a template for maybe use. So absolutely, we want to look at what those things are, again, work through with our city attorney so that we know that we're doing those things that are prudent, not just moving forward.
I'd like to express some concern to expedite that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our speakers for the evening. If there's no other business to conduct on, by this body, Madam City Attorney, ma'am, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, I'm letting y'all go. I got one announcement. I don't speak often, as you know, but, um, you all may recall that one of our assistant city attorneys, Bob Marriage, passed away in November. Bob was a longtime city attorney in my office and we are, he was a steward of all kinds of, um, history and support for this community. He, he loved Portsmouth almost as much as I do. And we are gonna honor him and on February 26th, we're dedicating a section of our law library to him. You'll, uh, just in case you don't get the invite on the website, which will be posted soon, please come to the Portsmouth Public Library at 3:00 PM. Uh, we're doing a dedication of a section of the law library to him to include, as, as you all know, he was an avid book reader, he studied black history, and we've collected a number of his gifted books to us and we're going to place them in the library for distribution to our community to continue his, um, legacy. I just wanted you all to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Seeing no other business to conduct by this body, this meeting, oh, Dr. Dodson, did you still want the floor? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Uh, as many of you may not know, but Mount Herman Civic League has a horseshoe tournament every year and many of us on the council are participating in it. There's a twenty-dollar entry fee. Uh, there's a lot of competitive talk, if I want to put it that way, that goes on during the tournament. Uh, if you're interested in helping us, it benefits not only student scholarships, but the Bernard Griffin Park upgrades. Uh, if you'd like to participate, please see me. It's, uh, May 17th at Bernard Griffin Park.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our, our presentation for this evening. Everyone drive safe and we'll see you next council meeting.